Great. Ready? Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order our regular Sherwood City Council meeting for April 3rd, 2012. Anyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Roll call.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Grant.
Here.
Counselor Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. We have four items on our consent agenda.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. We have three presentations. There are three items on our presentations. First, proclamation declaring April 20th, 2012, as Arbor Day in the city of Sherwood. I won't read all of the proclamation, but Arbor Day was first started in 1872, being observed in Nebraska, and in planting more than a million trees. It's now observed throughout the nation and the world. And this is the seventh or eighth year that we've had a proclamation declaring Arbor Day, as well as had events in the community. So, we have an Arbor Day event on the 20th, and location, it's on our website if you're interested in participating. It's a lot of fun. We plant trees, and hopefully the weather will be good again this year. We've got a pretty good string of good luck. Additionally, I'd like to proclaim April 28th, 2012, as Healthy Kids' Day. YMCA and the city of Sherwood have a collaboration that recognizes the YMCA as the city's recreation facility. The Sherwood Regional Family YMCA strengthens the fabric of the Sherwood community and has been part of the community since 1998. Healthy Kids' Day is celebrated locally in Sherwood and is a YMCA national event that includes fun, engaging, and creative activities for children and families, and promotes year-long wellness and healthy living. YMCA Healthy Kids' Day events are free and open to everyone. So, go to the Y, look at their website, and see if... I encourage everyone to participate in Healthy Kids' Day on the 28th. Lastly, we always love to have an opportunity to recognize outstanding youth in our community, and today is another example. We get to recognize Joseph Ludoff?
Ludoff.
Ludoff. If you'd come forward, he recently became an Eagle Scout. If you'd sit at the table, Joe, and pull the mic towards you, and push the button on it so it raises up. Welcome, Joe. Becoming an Eagle Scout is not easy, and takes many years of dedication in scouting, and it culminates in an Eagle Scout project.
Yes.
Would you mind sharing with the community what your project was?
Sure.
And how much, you know, although you describe it, we might ask questions.
All right. So, I'll start with the tail of the tape. One of our scout masters, Mr. Huffman, he works for Forest Grove Parks and Rec, and traditionally over the years, he's always had a clipboard of projects for us to do in terms of Eagle Scout projects. There's always something that needs to be done with Parks and Rec, and basically just pick whichever one we want to do. In my case, it was to build an agility course for a dog park. Coincidentally, prior, not to my project, there was another Eagle Scout doing his project who did an agility course for the dog park, the small dog park in that same park, which is Thatcher-Loomis Park in Forest Grove, and I was going to do the agility course for the larger dogs. So, it worked pretty well. Not one of us did the other. Planning phase was fairly simple. Me and my dad drew up sketches and plans of what we wanted to use and what we wanted to do with that. We drew up several different obstacles we wanted to put in, ramps, tunnels, hurdles, that sort of thing, as well as a couple of park benches we wanted to last a really long time. Once we had that cooked up, we went to Home Depot and got all of our materials, just in one foul swoop, made a record of everything. That's the thing that trips up most Eagles is the record-keeping. They get to their board of view, and they don't have records for anything, or receipts or anything like that, and it trips them up a lot of the time. So, once we had that, we scheduled workdays. We had people from our troop, people from different troops, coming out and helping us. First two days of work were assembly days, where we just built obstacles, and that was at my house. That went pretty smoothly. We had food, refreshments, just a couple hours over, not two days of a weekend, and we were pretty much done with the assembly. I'm actually amazed it went so smoothly. Normally, if things go that well, it means something bad's about to happen. After that, we just waited a while until we were ready for install, and then, again, just another weekend of installation. We were pretty much done. We laid down landscaping tarb where we were going to put our obstacles, covered it with bark chips. The bark chips were supplied by Parks and Rec, which made a lot of things a lot easier. Let me just outline the park for you. The dog park in question is basically just a big rectangle with a bark chip path going in oval through the middle of it, and that needed to be redone a bit. So, we laid out new bark chips wherever they were sparse in the path, and then we laid the obstacles around the edge of the path, all around that. There were five obstacles total, and then we picked, although we didn't pick, Mr. Huffman, our representative from Parks and Rec, picked where we're going to put the two benches in question, which were concrete and wood. Pretty simple, but they're going to last a long time. Again, total, we had four workdays, which is pretty cool to get it all done in that short space of time, so I'm pretty amazed that things went so smoothly.
Fantastic. It sounds like a great project, and certainly a lot of work. How many, about how many volunteers or other scouts and folks helped you out?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was well over 30 people.
Not an easy thing to add to...
Between the two different work weekends, that is.
Yeah. And so then the total hours that were put in by you and your volunteers was pretty substantial.
Well over 200.
Fantastic. That is, that's great. Are there any questions from counselors?
Sure. Would you like to recite the scout oath for us?
Absolutely. If I could just make a comment. Okay, I have a lot of friends who are also Eagle Scouts. Some of them are brothers, some of them, none of their siblings have ever been in Scouts, but a lot of them live in Hillsborough, and I just wanted to make a comment on how Hillsborough does not recognize its Eagles, which we think is not in the least bit appropriate. So, I'd just like to come on and thank you all for recognizing me tonight, because technically I do live in Sherwood. All right. So, you'd like me to recite the scout oath?
That'd be great.
On my honor, I'll do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, and to keep myself physically strong, morally strong, mentally awake, and morally straight.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joe? Well, we do really love to recognize our scouts and other youth in our community that achieve and go above and beyond. And on that note, I'm going to come around and give you the certificate of achievement that's presented to you. Joseph Ludoff?
Ludoff. Ludoff.
Ludoff, I apologize. On behalf of the city of Sherwood and the Sherwood City Council, we congratulate you on your outstanding achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
And Mom, come up wherever you need to, to get good pictures.
If I could just ask one more question. Just out of curiosity, I was wondering, are there any other Eagles in the room, not tonight?
Do you have to get asked that question?
I'm not one, but I have two in my household, so obviously I'm not one.
Counts by our standards.
Yeah. I actually have the little mom pin, too.
She doesn't have that yet. We haven't had the court of honor yet. We're timing that to do at the same time as graduation.
Outstanding.
Yeah, my son was a fourth-generation Eagle.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, like, as you can see, we're certainly proud of you, and your family's certainly proud of you, and the community's proud of you.
Once an Eagle Scout, always an Eagle Scout.
That's right.
Yes. Great job.
Thank you very much, again.
Thanks for coming.
Next on our agenda is citizen comments. Time to address counsel on any issue not on the agenda. If you would like to address, please fill out a form and bring it forward. R.J. Claus, welcome.
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. First two comments were made to Mr. Passimer. I'd like you to instruct your crews, as they clean the stormwater on Cedar Creek, to stay off of my property and to go in there and remove the trash and cuttings they threw on it. I doubt if you know what trespass is, but I'm getting a little sick of trespass, because you're clearly trying to press those property values. Number two, you better check the footprints on Columbia after we sold those lots. Those footprints have dramatically changed. Value of a property depends on footprints, and every one of you know it. Now, side note, I noticed on this that you signed on the sign code vote, Mr. Langer. I thank you for that. You know where this is going. Now, I'm going to tell you, I've done everything I can to avoid a lawsuit. I'm completely finished with any form of trying to talk it through, but don't make it too easy. Because there was a, ten, there was an old case called Abrams Supreme Court, where they tried to allege bad tendencies. Worked pretty good until Douglas and some people got a hold of that. But then when they really started looking at it, they started realizing the Federalist Paper 51 was really what you should look at. Now, I'm going to tell you over and over and over again, this council's attempted to provoke me, and their attorney has, with remarks like batshit crazy. I taught a course for American Bar once, and if I'd had any attorney use that kind of language in the room, I would have sent him back to college. But my point is this: You are definitely headed, in all likelihood, with litigation under Title 42 U.S.C. in 1983 and '88. We're going to be after both damages and our legal fees. We've been there before. But what you're doing is pressing and giving incident after incident, including selling zoning, then restraining trade, and then turning around and moving documents, with proof right in front of you, what you're doing is moving hundreds of thousands of dollars of value around. And then I have to hear things like, retailing's not a zero-sum game. I think Councilman Grant told me, the more retailing you get, the better off you are. Retailing breeds retailing. I guess it's something like rabbits. It's just not true. You're going to have a certain average retailing in a community. You move it from one place to another, and what you're doing is taking that person's zoning. Now, I realize now what the game's about. I didn't for a long time. I'm sorry. I thought of better character, and that people would pay a little attention to zoning. But once the batshit crazy remark was made, and I started confirming with some of the legal councils there that that was done, I realized what you were trying to do is to drive us to a point that it would appear that we were a little illogical. Now, I'm going to give you a very simple lesson. There was an ex-mayor in this town I gave the same warning to. He finally resigned, because when you start looking at ethics, you better be very, very careful what you're doing. When you're enriching yourself, it's called a potential or an actual conflict of interest. And that sign code is just more of the same. But, at this point, it's a professional matter, and we're going to handle it professionally. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else like to give citizen comment? Unfortunately, it's not appropriate, Tom.
Tom Nelson, 15991 Southwest Windrow Lane, Sherwood. I come before you tonight as a concerned citizen. Yes, according to my severance agreement, I'm an employee until April 13th. However, I'm also a citizen, a taxpayer, and a voter, and am very concerned with your direction. In 2006-'07, the council, with significant input from the community, adopted a very ambitious economic development strategy. The first priority of the strategy was to hire an economic development professional to lead the city in implementation of the strategy. I left a very good position with the state of Oregon in December '07 to do just that. I saw the vision, and I wanted to be part of something that was great. Through the four-plus years since, I have been a chief cheerleader for Sherwood throughout the region and the state. Sherwood has become well-known as a happening place for economic development. We have labored and succeeded in developing a reputation for a good place to do business, and a place that people want to be. We have made great strides in redeveloping Old Town and getting Sherwood Main Street off the ground. We are recognized as having one of the most successful urban renewal agencies in the state. I have been called to sit on statewide and regional boards, because people recognize that success energizes organizations and leads to more success. A limited portion of the position has been to manage the urban renewal agency and its associated projects. A good deal of the urban renewal project work is done, but that does not mean that our work is complete. There is much to do in the realm of economic development. We have set the stage for the main performance. We have most of the infrastructure in place, and economy on the rebound. At a time when other communities facing the same economic issues are adding economic development staff, now is not the time to slow this momentum. Now is the time to become more aggressive in taking advantage of recruitment, retention, and expansion opportunities. When most of my colleagues around the region and the state heard about the elimination of the economic development position, the overwhelming response was, what were they thinking? Do you remove the director of the play as the play is beginning? Do you relegate the work of the quarterback to a few linemen when the game is starting? Frankly, I believe, like most economic development professionals, that this is a very short-sighted, poorly-vetted strategic decision. It's a decision with no vision. I will be okay personally, so this is really not about me. It's no doubt the Lord opening another door for me that I would not have entered if not for your decision. I was committed to my work in Sherwood regardless of other opportunities. I will be fine, however. I hurt as a person who has become deeply invested in completing a job, completing a plan that was well orchestrated, and I hurt for a community that may have lost its way forward. To set the record straight for some who automatically thought this must be some performance-related issue, I have had nothing but exemplary performance reviews, and have been assured that this is about budget. If anyone thinks otherwise, I would hope we could resolve that. My motivation has been to purely do what is best for Sherwood and the Sherwood community. So, I implore you, don't be mobilized by budget fears so much that you lose the vision of what can be achieved with the right investment, a view to what is very possible, and a better future for Sherwood. We're on the precipice of great success. All the tools are there. Make sure you put people in place that know how to use them. I have been and am committed to assisting staff, our partners, and the community in this transition, but I knew this would be my last opportunity for the time being to call on you to think about the long-term ramifications of your actions, to call your attention again to the vision of a successful and prosperous Sherwood. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom. Next on our agenda is new business. Resolution 2012-019, authorize the city manager pro temp to award construction contract for Southwest Edie Road sidewalk improvement project. Bob?
Jason Waters, civil engineer with the city of Sherwood. This resolution is for a sidewalk infill project between Borchers and Copper Terrace. There's two portions of sidewalk on the north side that we're trying to infill here, that we're going to infill here, and this is a resolution to award the contract to Subcom Excavation and Utilities. We did have a public formal bidding process and a bid opening here at City Hall about a week and a half ago. The protest period has ended, and we have discussed the bidder packet with legal counsel, and determined that Subcom is responsive. We've checked their references, and we're recommending that the city council award Resolution 2012-19.
Great. Questions for Jason? If supported by counsel, when do you expect completion to be?
We hope to have the project completed by the end of May. So, fairly quickly.
That'd be great.
That's great.
No other questions for you? Discussion from counsel on the proposed resolution? Certainly, I'm very appreciative of effort by staff to get this rolling, and looks like a very good price, and it'll be very welcome in the community. I move you approve Resolution 2012-019.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-019, authorizing the city manager pro temp to award a construction contract for Southwest Edie Road sidewalk improvement project? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Jason. City manager report.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. I just wanted to mention that the proposed budget, which is the first step in our budget process, is available both online and in the library for people who in the public would like to review the proposed budget. As I mentioned, that's the first step. We will be having our first budget committee meeting on April 16th, a second budget committee meeting on April 23rd, and a third budget committee meeting on April 30th, if necessary. So, essentially, the process is staff puts together a proposed budget that is then reviewed thoroughly by the budget committee, who then makes a recommendation to city council, who will ultimately adopt the final budget. So, there'll be multiple times for public testimony at those meetings, as well as an opportunity to come in and just listen and become a part of the process. So, I'm looking forward to that. I also wanted to mention to counsel that on Friday of last week, there was an initiative that was submitted from a citizen of Sherwood to revise the city charter. The charter revision would essentially prevent any city funds being spent in any way in regards to any public rail projects that may come to the city of Sherwood at any point in time. The process is the city attorney looks at it, and the city recorder, to see if it's acceptable. If it is, then ballot title is prepared, and then the petitioner needs to go collect signatures in regards to that. So, I wanted to give you a heads-up that there is a potential charter amendment request out there.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Yes?
The budget is available in the library. Check out the budget that's been proposed. It's also available online. It's under the finance department. I've asked them to put a link on the homepage, and they're going to try to do that. I don't think our page is set up, but anyway, they're going to try. But it is available under the finance department on the website. There are copies in the library that people can also look at. So, front desk, library, online.
Great. Thanks, Craig. Counsel announcements? The one I have that I'm excited to share is, as has been reported, and I've said, the Washington County Board has started the process to select projects for the next five-year Mistip program, in which they're going to be allocating roughly $42 million per commission district of the four commission districts. That evaluation and selection process should wrap up into the summer, but they, at the urging of some, the board last Tuesday decided to select some projects to greenlight now so that they don't miss out on the 2013 construction season, and the board voted to support our request of $10.5 million to improve Towalton Sherwood Road.
Wow. You're really good at getting that free money.
It's not free, but it's trying to direct the money in our community and improve our community, and improve our focuses getting around, be it on vehicles, or pedestrian, or bicycle. They had already allocated the engineering for the work, which is being done this year. In fact, their consultants are meeting with property and business owners starting this week, in fact. The project will improve the function at the intersection of Roy Rogers Towalton Sherwood Road and 99, and then go in each direction as much as possible, roughly to Borchers and Langer Farms Parkway, five lanes, and anything else they deem important to improve the function. These big intersections are the big pinch point on these arterials. That's why the money was spent, like, on the other end in Towalton on I-5, and now it's being spent there. So, great news for us. Some work to be done in planning, but it'll be a great project to be underway next year, and then we'll continue to be advocating. The city will be continuing, I'll be continuing to advocate for... We've got about $25 million in other projects that we'd like. We know we won't be able to necessarily get it all, but we're cautiously optimistic, and we'll know more on those funds and what the county board agrees to, like I said, August-ish timeframe.
So, mayor, could you tell the citizens and us where that Mistip money does come from?
Absolutely. The Mistip program, for those that are new to Oregon, or new to Washington County, or whatever, about 25 years ago, the first five-year tax levy was approved by the voters of Sherwood to approve a set of projects throughout the county to tax themselves. That was a successful program. After five years, they did it again, drew up a project list, projects all over the county, voted on it, it was approved, did it a third time. After the third time with Measure 5, 49, and 50, that local option tax for construction got rolled into the permanent tax rate for the county. It's one of those things that happened. Well, the county, in their wisdom, pledged and have continued to the day the pledge to isolate those dollars that are raised for transportation projects, using the guidelines that were in place for the first three votes, to do, use those dollars in five-year project windows throughout the county. And so, every five years, it's got rolled into the permanent tax base, they've now done, now we're out, this is Mistip 3D. So, they did a 3A, 3B, we're in the end of 3C, and they're going to do what they refer to as 3D. Very successful. Our neighboring counties are pretty envious of the commitment that we, taxpayers, showed back then, and the county board has stayed true to. And so, part of the process that they do every five years is cities' proposed projects. They're evaluated and reviewed and recommended by an advisory committee called the Washington County Coordinating Committee. County Coordinating Committee. Roy Rogers, who is our county commissioner, he serves as the chair of WCCC. I've been the vice chair of the WCCC for the last three years, and it's primarily mayors of all the cities, and it's reviewed, and a recommendation is then advanced to the county board. Generally, they try to keep equitable balance, but sometimes projects pop up that move some money out of one district into another, but that's the short story. But it's a great, it's a great program, and we're going to see some benefit next year, hopefully. We're also focusing energies on 124th, a great project for economic development, getting utilities and services to industrial area between Sherwood, Twalton, and Wilsonville. Another project on the list is buying right-of-way to build a future road from the end of 124th in Wilsonville over to Boones Ferry. Another, so those are of high importance to us as well as Twalton and Wilsonville. The intersection of 99 Elworth and Kruger is a big safety issue, as well as economic development opportunity that we're advocating with council support, as well as near us, but not in the city limits, the intersection of Roy Rogers and Shoals-Sherwood. So hopefully, we can advocate and be successful with all those projects on the list. We'll see.
I just have to say, as a citizen, the education I received being on city council has led me to understand there's very little that we could do with that sort of money coming in on those large projects. And it, you know, that's why I said it's free money. It's not free, but to us, we are so limited in what we could do that those projects likely would never be done.
It is difficult. It is difficult, absolutely. And this is a great resource, and staff has done a great job in helping position us as well, and we've gotten certainly the support from the county staff and county commissioner.
Staff seems to always be ahead of the game on these things. Jason is sitting there, and I know he helped the feasibility study with Cedar Creek, and I really appreciate that we were ready and able to get that grant as well.
Thank you. Any other announcements? So needless to say, we're having a good week as a community, so with that, we will adjourn the city council meeting, and in 10 seconds or 20 seconds, we'll-